By the Belmar Board of Education Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven P. M. Has been provided in accordance with the requirements of chapter two thirty-one, public clause nineteen seventy-five. Notice the meeting was posted on the board of the board in the principal's office of Belmar Elementary School, on Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey, on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Notice that the meeting was transmitted to the Hasberry Park Press, the co-star, interminable clerk, oh my god, I can't speak, of the borough of Belmar and Lake Como School District on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're going to stand for the flag salute, but before we do, I just wanted to let you know that we wanted to take a moment after the flag salute for a moment of silence because we lost a, the sudden loss of Matt Sharon, who was a previous board member for a long time and a champion for BES students. And he passed away suddenly yesterday, so we just would like to offer a moment of silence after the flag salute in his memory and in support of his.
Let me introduce to the flag the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Shari Adams?
Here.
Internet Allmack?
Yeah.
Kimberly Chuck?
Yeah.
Ryan Conklin?
Here.
Amy Petty? Tucker Herbert?
Here.
Shaw Lomas?
Yeah.
Jennifer Nickle? Paul Allmack?
Here.
Michelle Cartaglia?
Here.
Do we have any comments from the publics on any agenda items at this point in time? And then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, great, so we had a lot of positive events and programs since our last meeting. We obviously had the St. Patty's League Parade here in Belmar. Mrs. Levis was a grand marshal, also one of our teachers, we had her last month. We had our cheer team out there, and we also had our band who represented our school really well, playing every time we had a stop, so it was really great. Couple stops. So just thank you to them. Congrats to our spelling bee champ, Max Wartman and Raphael Cesare. They really did an excellent job. The two of them got some words that I definitely would not have gotten right. So our school musical, The Lord of Oz, was absolutely excellent. Anybody who came out, you saw how great the show was. We had a packed house here on Friday. The kids did an excellent job. Just like every, any show, it's always a little crazy right before it goes, and, and once the, the lights come on and the show starts, it really goes well. So I was just really proud of our teachers, the students, the community for coming out to support. Really outstanding. We have a new sensory hallway downstairs, and our sensory room has been getting a lot of attention in our sending districts. We've had some of the special ed administrators from our sending districts come by and take a look and see what we've done as, as a model for something locally in one of our schools that we're working on. So that's really been a feather in our cap. STEM Day with the sending districts, G and T students from all our sending districts came by. They had a STEM Day in this room. It was really excellent, really well-run, and all the kids seemed very happy to come and get out of their school and come to ours for a day. Let's see, professional development on February twelfth was incredibly rewarding. Great feedback from our staff and from a few other staff from a few other schools that came by to soak up what we were being able to offer. And we want to continue to be a leader in this area when it comes to professional development and best practices for teachers. So we're trying to coordinate more work between our specials teachers and our sending district and other local school districts to make this a beacon of professional development and what's right for kids and making that happen not only here but in other, in other schools. The guardians getting ready for spring and new soil just arrived. They're going to be putting more in there, so we'll have more, our guardian is going to be more robust this year than it was last year, so we're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to our spring sports teams, which are getting ready. And we do have a joint effort with the Belmar Borough and us to refurbish our baseball field a little bit and make it the best one in the league. We're going to be doing some mound work, we're going to be doing some claywork in the, on the field itself, and we're really looking forward to that work happening soon so that we're, so that our, our baseball field, although I think it already is one of the best on the league, will be by far the best, head and shoulders above the rest. Not that I'm bragging, but wait until it happens, I guess, maybe, or keep quiet. And we'll make sure that the girls softball field gets a little bit of attention because sometimes it seems a little too wet there. And facilities update, last but not least, the sign, if anybody saw it on the way in. It really looks great. It looks like it, it was always there. I think the font is right, the size is right, and it feels really natural. So a lot of recognition to Mr. Varsley, to Mr. Lasky. We stayed on top of it and, you know, it worked out.
Now you get.
Varsley's happier than he's appearing right now.
Now, now once the flowers go, then you have to replace the picture. Oh my god.
Okay, and that's it for the superintendent's report.
Can I have a motion to approve the regular executive session minutes for February two thousand and twenty-four? So, Bert, any questions, corrections?
You know, I wanted to just say, what, Tuesday, what was that about? That Mary Stoll was invited to talk, I don't know what that is.
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a county, it's a county event that every year a student gets selected by the staff to go and represent a BES. And so Mary was one of the students that was, that's very good that you mentioned that.
Yeah, I, I just, because I remember getting the email.
Yeah, so she's, she's going to be representing our school along with other students at that grade level to, to meet with the county and to.
Oh, it didn't happen, really?
No, it's, so she served on a panel of other students. So they get to go into the county with other students and, and serve as a panel for representation of Belmar Elementary School.
Any roll call, please, in a minute.
Okay, Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Oh, I see. The personnel items?
Personnel, there's not very much. This time we have Isabel Zardi, our professional position that we'd like to start. Superintendent is authorized to hire staff members to fill on field positions for our next board meeting. Permission to assign wheeling current staff members to grant-funded tutoring positions for A R P and after the school day and high-impact tutoring. Those would be staff members that are already working with us, and they'd just be deciding to stay to help out some kids. So that's pretty simple. Substitute, and that's it for the personnel items.
Can someone move the personnel items, please? Ms. Allmack, Ms. Allmack? Any questions for comments on the personnel items? Roll call, please.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
The education items?
Education operations, we'll show again. Our twenty-four, twenty-five high school assignment placements, according to the policy fifteen twenty, are approved. That's where we assign the students to the high school. And then we have eighth-grade beach day, which probably could have gone under field trip, so we decided it's a sign of good things to come. It's a sign that summer's coming, that we're approving the beach day on June, on Friday, June seventh. So that does give us a little bit of time on that Monday, Tuesday, if there's an issue for a rainy. But that's very exciting, and then travel, professional development, board travel schedule.
The high impact.
Oh, the high impact touring.
You do one?
Yes, so to.
Yeah, so the number four is just accepting the funds that we already received. We approved it back in October to Smith, whatever.
Can somebody move the education operations items? Ms. Allmack, any questions or comments?
For the high school assignments, are they just picked randomly every year?
So it has to do with your enrollment date. So if you, the students who have been enrolled the longest in BES are, are picked first. And if there's a tie, let's say there's four students that are tied for the last two spots, those kids go into a lottery with each other because they have the same registration date, which would be like September first of whatever year they may have registered. So the longer you're here, the more likely that you're going to be in. But if you're on the cusp, then we have a lottery for the students on that cusp.
And it has nothing to do with siblings or like, you know, it's not families? Just one.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Ms. Fatt? Oh, she's not here. Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And then we have the finance items going to the budget.
Yeah, so underneath the finance items, first thing is just the monthly certification that as of February twenty-ninth, no budgetary line items was overspent. Then for the following one through seven resolutions. So number one is the bills list for February two thousand and twenty-four of one point five million. Number two is allow me, the authorization, allow me to pay any March bills and make any transfers and record them at the April board meeting. Number three is our board secretary and treasurers report for January two thousand and twenty-four. Number four is our budget transfer report as of January twenty-four. Number five is the monthly transfer report for, as of January two thousand and twenty-four. Number six is the preschool education district budget planning workbook that actually gets submitted with the budget as well. And then number seven is our monthly certification of the board, of the board secretaries and treasury report. And that's it.
And do we need to go into the details of that?
That's going to be next.
All right, can someone move the finance items? Ms. Chuck, second please. So, any comments or questions so far? Roll call.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yeah.
All right, so the next resolution is for the adoption of the tentative budget, which allows me to send the twenty-four, twenty-five budget to the county office for them to approve it, and then they send it back to us for the final adoption at our next meeting in April. So you see here the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The total expenditures of sixteen million, two hundred and three thousand, seven fifty-eight. Less anticipated revenues of five million, nine eighteen, eight seventy-seven. These taxes to be raised for ten million, two hundred, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eighty-eight one. The next part of the resolution is just saying that our public hearing is going to be April twenty-fifth at seven P. M. The next part is setting the tuition reach, which is actually based off the budget software that is on the state's website. The next one is allowing us to use the adjustment enrollment. So we're seeing a, an increase in enrollment, so it allows us to adjust the tax levy for that. Same thing with adjustment for healthcare costs, but based off the budget software, we're able to increase the tax levy to help us support the increase in tax, the healthcare cost. Number, the next one is capital reserve withdrawal, which is what we talked about in our Tuesday meeting with the financing facility, about withdrawing a hundred and ninety thousand to renovate our gym. So we're looking at wall padding, flooring, new hoops, things like that to get that going, wrestling, play, to get that going, so this way we can renovate it and, you know, refresh it. And then the next part is just our annual, it's a travel-related expenditure reimbursement, where we always have about twenty-five thousand set in the budget, about so far as today we spent seven thousand, one oh four. That's it.
Can someone move this resolution to the secondary budget? Slama, second. Slamas, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Allmack?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Do we have a Madison Square report?
Uh, no, already given. I mean, I could talk about the basketball, the girls. No, they didn't win the state championship. Yeah, it's exciting. Very exciting for this one, yeah.
I thought you were going to talk about the other.
Well.
That was all over the team.
That was all over everything. But no, the girls won, so that was really exciting.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And they're doing their play this weekend, starting last night. It was last night, tonight, tomorrow, and two, Saturday, so if anybody wants to do that, but other than that, no.
Okay. Any communications? Any old business? Any new business?
So.
I just wanted to bring up that the Belmar Elementary School website still reflects the previous Board of Education.
Does it?
For both Lake Como and, I don't know that anything in Lake Como changed, but for.
Okay.
Our appointments.
We'll make that change tomorrow.
And I do have something as well. For our kids with the surf sesh that are more advanced and they, have we thought of baby aiding geometry to the mix for them? I got a little feedback that some of the tests they were taking at these other schools was heavy in geometry, and they seemed to struggle.
You know, that's a, that's a, it's not a bad idea. The thing about surf seshes is that it is fluid, so kids can go in and out of it depending on whether they're there or not. But I could talk to the eighth-grade teachers and Mrs. Murphy, who's, you know, does a lot of the algebra works.
It just sounded like a lot of the tests had a lot of geometry on it.
You know, I think for extension, for the kids who, who could use some extension, I think it's a great suggestion. I'll break it some. Yeah, I mean, especially if it's early exposure to concepts that maybe they haven't seen and they can work through. These are typically kids who are pretty good at math in general and might be able to problem solve with the assistance of a teacher on the side. I like it.
Especially what I'm hearing, they're, they're not being challenged.
Sure, so, so surf sesh is basically a way that we've branded intervention here at school because saying intervention period doesn't sound like a lot of fun to kids. We decided, okay, what's our theme here, like what's important? The beach is here, surfing's fun, we're going to call them surf sesh. And so what we do is assess students on their skills and ability, and then after, you know, let's say a week, okay, we've got all these quizzes, how did everybody do? Who needs a lot of support? Who needs a little bit of support? Who's almost there and who's got it? And the kids who've got it don't have to be in a small group that goes over that same topic. We're going to push them to something else. We're going to give them something else. It could be extension in art, music, or something else, or it could be in mathematics. And so what we'd like to do is attack students where their needs are. And for some kids, they need extension, they need something different. And for some kids, they need more small group time on a concept that's really important. So we only do surf sesh on things that are really important because there's too much in the school day in general, and when we decide what's really important, we attack those things because we know the kids are going to need those things to be successful long-term. They're, they're going to find success and growth. But that, that surf sesh will also group students who have it. And so we try and get, get them something different. That something different could be pushing them in a little bit of, a little bit of geometry, something that wouldn't be graded and go on their report card, but could be really helpful to them moving forward, knowing they're going to the high school and they may need it. At least a leg up, you know, and what is that first unit of geometry in the high school? You know, what does that look like? How do we get kids used to that vocabulary? And a few of those things they're going to need when it comes to, to, I'm, I'm, yeah, I like it.
That's great.
Good idea. Thank you.
And, and I'm sorry, just one last thing, I just want to go back to what Sherry said about Mr. Sharon, it's a big loss to our community.
Yeah.
He really gave back and, and cared about Belmar. For any of the people that have been involved in the wrestling, Mr. Sharon's been here twenty-five, thirty years. I know my son's wrestled for him, I know my brother-in-law's went back twenty-five years with him. So it's a, it's a big loss, it was a guy that really gave back. So it's going to be missed in this town.
Yeah, he was on, he was the president right before me when he left.
He was at the last meeting.
Yeah.
He was.
He was very involved with the school, the town, everything, the town.
We've been discussing how to honor him here at the school. It's a little soon for that.
Sure.
But I think that there, in, in time, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to honor him in a way that he deserves.
I do understand they just posted services for Monday and Tuesday, huh?
No, Brian's in Wall? From four to eight at noon.
Okay. Is there any thing else?
Do you have something?
No, I really don't.
Yeah, I just, if we, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, since I've been here, the calendar comes up a lot, you know.
Comes up every year.
Couple of years. It comes up every year. And, you know, I think maybe, you know, it comes up often here at the meetings in, in general, and I think I wanted to see how everybody felt about like a review process for it. You know, I, I kind of, with a lot of things, I like to create some structures to, to make good decisions, kind of like we would for a strategic plan. This is kind of a big deal, the calendar is, you know, one of these big things that has a lot of impact on how we operate and the community in general. So I wanted to, you know, talk to the board if you wanted to consider a process for reviewing it.
And specifically is referring to the February?
The February, yeah, because that's the thing that usually is the, the point.
So, so like, does it serve to send to parents?
Yeah, so I've got a, a multifaceted kind of thing I'll walk through really quick. I know, I'm sorry. So, well, just because, you know, I don't know, it's how I operate, so I, I don't want to organize. So following, you know, there's a few things that, that come into consideration here, right? Obviously following the contract and the law. And that doesn't require much except for meeting the days that we have to be here and meeting the teacher's contract to make sure that there, there's alignment there. Gathering input from the community and their priorities. You know, I want community, community members, all community members to have a voice, the impact it would have on their families. And, you know, the few people that have brought it up don't represent the entire community, but I want that representation to be there. I think that's always in the best interest of making good decisions, is getting data. And, you know, I create this in English and Spanish, I want people's preferences. I'd also want some input on people's enrollment in both BES and Madison Square High School because that's our sending district. Some families have more insight on what that dynamic feels like when you have one kid in one school and one in another with that calendar. So I think that would be a factor in the survey that I send out. And I'd be willing to create a video that kind of explains it, kind of like the strategic plan, saying, hey, listen, we've got this decision to make, we want people's input on what they believe or what they think about, about what makes sense. Obviously instructional and district logistic priorities regarding attendance during that week, what does that look like? That's always something that matters to me, making sure that there's a balance between the calendar and meet the needs of the community. Time before testing is always important to me, but that's not the only factor, right? Facilities and maintenance, that's another thing that could, that could be a thing where if we need to change out our filters on the H P A C units, that's something that could happen during the break. But again, I'm losing some tests, some pre-testing instruction time, and now we do have A C that's available in June. There's a lot of factors under that category alone. And then alignment to the sending districts, whether it's professional days, which I'd like to align more that are separate from this, or whether it's alignment during those breaks, and holiday and staffing for both districts, and then staffing considerations. I'd want the input from our staff and morale in one direction or the other, although it's just one of the facets. The more information we have, I think the better decision we can make. But, you know, I think it comes down to what is the data telling us? Right, because I, although with any decision, there's always going to be people, people on one side or the other of it, and I think this is one of those things that can upset people in one direction or another. So I'm, that's why I'm kind of reluctant to put my hands on it because it looks like it's going to be hot. I just don't know how hot, and, and so it's kind of one of these things that I'm reluctant to approach it because I know that it could be polarizing, but at the same time, it's come up enough that I feel like maybe we have to address it. I don't know how everybody feels.
Is the survey going to be like, would you favor a full week off? Or would you favor Monday, Friday, or would you favor no days?
No, I mean, I think that, you know, I, I drafted one. So.
You can tell you what's happening.
It would say I'm a.
Monday, Friday was nice this year, I will tell you that. The Monday, Friday was nice.
Yeah, that's been a while. That's been a while.
Yeah, and so that, that is nice.
So it's either that or the full week. But not with Friday, then.
Right, it, yeah, it, so what, what they do is they take that whole week, but then they don't have Monday off.
Right.
Yeah, they go to school on the.
Well, you know, because your kids.
Yeah.
They what? They go on President's Day, they return on President's Day. They have the week leading up to, and they go to school on President's Day.
It's very interesting. So, you know, this question would be, would be, would you be in this, in favor of the same winter break as Madison Square High School and the other sending districts? Projected dates would be February tenth to fourteenth.
Are we the only one who doesn't know?
Yeah.
Are you sure? And no consideration for Red Bank?
Well, that's the other concern, right? But, you know, and that's the, that's the tricky part. And I could take a look at our alignment to Red Bank.
Sometimes it's a different one than Madison Square.
It's a different, yeah. And, and in some cases, you know, the hard part for us is that our sending district is Madison Square, so that might carry the more weight because last year we only get a couple kids in the Red Bank, this year we're getting more, but I don't, but again, that's another facet to this decision that would be on the scales. Huh?
It's a very different year.
Right.
Everybody's different.
Everybody's different.
I don't think that all the sending districts have come back on that Monday, do they?
No, who, who does the February break? Is it Madison Square and Brielle?
Spring like heights does it as well.
Yeah, they have a lot of them. With, they come back on the holiday. All of them, I think.
I don't know if they all come back on the holiday.
I don't think so.
So the only other, I mean, the only, I mean, again, now we're, we'll get into the weeds for a minute, but that could be a professional development day to come on the holiday.
Well, I mean, here's.
Is it not a state holiday also? Because you can't force people to work on a state holiday.
Right, so, and so that's where the other consideration for.
I don't know if my, I don't know. But, well, I have concerns all, about it altogether.
Yeah.
But I also think that, as I said to Jimmy already, I think when you have a survey and you're sending out a survey, you better be prepared to act on those results in some way.
Do whatever the majority says.
Or else, what's the purpose? And then you get a lot of flak for not doing it. Why did you bother? I remember we went through that with the whole uniform thing.
And so this is why I feel like this is like a hot stove and kind of being cautioned around because this is not my decision, right? You know, I'm here as a facilitator for what people want. Like, and what I, I, I'm going to put my foot down for education.
How many people talk to you about this? Is this really a big issue?
Well, it is a big issue when you have multiple children who go to Madison Square and go here.
And then you keep them out if you go somewhere.
Yeah, so your kids are at school.
Yeah, so you do. How much of the attendance record is affected during that week?
That's what I was going to say, the same thing.
There's a difference, yeah. There's, I, I, I took a look at the, the previous week, this year, and the, that week. I don't think I have the data with me, but there's, there's a, there's a difference in attendance that was probably twenty kids a day.
Yeah, I think the teachers really planned for it, too. Yeah, I just, like, my personal experience of taking my daughter out that week, she didn't miss much because there wasn't much planned because they expected a lot of people out.
Yeah.
But like, on the flip side, I feel like I would, I also would love to bring up the issue of like, we accept so many days of absences. Like I don't know if there's a, a reason why we have that number, but I would kind of be nervous about bringing that topic up now if we start then.
What do you mean by that?
Like I, I think we get twenty-two days for a student to be absent.
No.
Which seems very high.
No, no, I don't want, that's way too high.
That's sort of a ten.
No.
Under, under the regulations, it's supposed to report ten.
That's a ten.
Yeah. Yeah, so once you get to eighteen, now, now you're on the, now you're on, um, on the states.
You mean to lose credit or something?
I don't know. I, I just received a letter that said, you know, the board of the policies. I, I thought it was twenty-two days.
So I'll take a look at the attendance letter, but eighteen is considered chronic because now you're ten days out. And so that chronic absentee then gets reported to the state. And if we're out of compliance with that and our numbers rise, we have to get, get put on a plan for, uh, tech for chronic absenteeism. And that is a guided plan. I have to report to you, hey, we're not meeting the state standard for attendance, which we traditionally have. And Belmar's attendance has been excellent over the years. But yeah, that would be problematic. I don't want anybody feeling like days of school aren't important, uh, because they're important to me. So here's one of those things where I'm like, this is important to me as superintendent. I care about this. You know, it's tough, and this is why it's such a tricky situation. And I'm trying to look at it from all angles, but in the end, I'm the facilitator of this, not the owner of it. Because I'm not, I don't live in town, you know, and, and this doesn't affect me very much, but.
Well, I think, I think part of the concerns in not doing it previously were about, it gets crazy around here. The further into June you get, the crazier it gets. And you don't, especially my kids, you know, walking back and forth to school when all that's going on.
I don't, I don't disagree with that either.
But also about staff issues. So I do think it's important to have an idea with staff issues. Because a lot of them have summer jobs that they start right after they.
Next year, Christmas falls kind of weird, right?
It's a big break.
Yeah, it's a big break.
And so, and so there's another consideration there, like if you're gonna, if, you might end up going into the following week and not ending on like the Friday. You know, because at this point, you'd probably end on the twentieth. If you did something like that. If you didn't, you'd end up a few days earlier, and you wouldn't have a problem with running into the next week. If you wanted to avoid that, you'd have to talk to the union about coming in before Labor Day, like we did this year, but they did that because of the roof project. And they're getting out in, on June eighteen, on fourteen. But that's a, that's a, something to have to navigate. Like I said, this is a really complex issue, and so there's no easy answers.
It's really three days because you're already taking the Friday and the Monday, so you move that Friday to Tuesday.
Well, nobody's fair talking about the week before.
And again, we're the only school around that has this, like everybody else pretty much.
No, they go back on Monday, just like everyone.
On the holiday, I would be totally opposed to that.
Yeah, I think all the sending districts have.
I would be totally opposed to that. I'm just telling you from my own point of view.
A lot of, uh, you know, things to look at, and everybody else has navigated it.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's part of it. Like this is gonna be a rich discussion, but I don't want to move forward without, and, and send out a survey without.
You've already created it?
I, well, I created it because I.
I think you do.
I think I would be in favor of the survey this year. I would not be in favor of that.
Okay.
I think you did a really great job with the calendar. I thought it was a happy meeting, and the kids get out at a nice time. I think a lot of base on what Sherri said, sure, the other towns get out a little later, but Belmar is definitely more heavy with the summer traffic and the cars and the people.
Yeah.
And especially that the bridge, uh, but that's gonna be for four years.
And the longer, the longer. I don't know if this is.
Four years?
Yeah.
I heard months.
No, 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 this time, but, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm.
We can always table it for next, next year. I think it's a good discussion actually.
I mean, you're talking about changing it this year.
I think you have a Christmas thing.
No, we're coming out next year.
No, no, no.
Yeah, this one's coming up.
Well, February's already gone. But, but also, as Brian said, this is a big, uh, winter break.
It's a big undertaking. And it's a big one.
If you did the survey, would you say the majority rules, like whatever the majority chooses is what we do?
So I don't know. That's, that's not, so that, that's the tricky part here because.
Well, it would be very hard not to do that.
Yeah, it'd be very hard not to do that.
I just think if you, think about all the people, like, so for all of us, it's not, it doesn't make a, maybe, I don't know, well, even years to come, but for all of us, it doesn't make a difference, right?
Yes, it makes, it's me.
Well, it's not asking to be represented.
Yeah, right.
I didn't, I, but, but I'm set, that's not why I said that. I'm saying like, if you think about everybody and like, it's not affecting that many people. Like if you take the survey for everybody who goes to the school now, right?
Like chances are the survey's going to come back that they don't want February break. That, that's what I would.
That's what I, that's exactly what I'm trying to say.
You think so?
I do.
I think, um, we look at the entire population.
I know that historically, there have been much more sentiment against it, at least from the board when, with people who had kids in the school at the time. They were not in favor of it.
Have you had much success of receiving surveys back? Because if you only get one damn question in the survey.
Well, then you're gonna get one who has a motivation to do it.
At least it's gonna be more in favor of, of not wanting.
That's what I think.
If you're letting them know that those days are gonna be on the end of the year.
Well, they'd have to.
Well, yeah, but there's no world.
But if we don't say that, they may not think that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Yeah, it would have to be.
They would have to.
It's, this is tough.
No, they don't know how many days.
In surveys you've sent out in the past, what has been the rate of participation?
Of returns?
Yeah.
There, it's not excellent. The best one we had was this strategic plan, but I pushed it, I ran a video, I, you know, we sent it to people's phones. But still, even then, it was limited, you know, like it wasn't a ton of people responding. So that's the tricky part, because if I send a survey, I need to know that it's connected to a student. That whoever wrote this is connected to, you know, Billy.
And you can get a mandatory form and a status.
Hmm, that's true.
And you'll get like eight million notices until you do it.
That would probably be the best.
Because there is, I mean, you could even say it doesn't matter to me, like, it, it, one of the options could be, it doesn't make a difference to me either way. Oof, oh man. I feel, I'm really regretting everyone brought this up.
I don't think it's a big deal. I feel like if you did the survey and you just went with whatever the majority said.
And so most of the people who wanted change are the ones who responded, and that really, maybe that was a tiny bit of the whole school.
Right.
But you do what, but the else is still trying.
They don't get to see their report.
I, how could you make this mandatory?
Because, because there's the portal that these.
I know, like, as in program, you can make it mandatory, but how can you make it mandatory? What's the enforcement mechanism?
They can't see the report card unless they do all the documents.
I suspect that's not legal.
Yeah.
You literally can't.
To do what? For things they have to complete.
For things they have to complete that are required by the state.
But I think if they get the thing from the school that's official that says, you don't think that they'll.
But I guess he said he. I think he said that it's, it's been in the past.
I think you, I think there would have to be a campaign to push people to.
Because if you got the majority, but then you only got a twenty percent completion, you really don't have enough data.
I mean, if the people concerned for that, I guess they're talking to you because they're not coming to the.
You're not representing the whole neighborhood.
No, someone, I mean, they come to the board.
Well, I mean, they're not saying that at all.
Well, Bart said it last time. Yeah, Bart said it last time.
Yeah, Bart did, Bart.
Okay, well, all right, it was brought up, but people aren't here every month or saying this is a problem.
I think you should put it on the show. It was a really good form.
But you know, you could, if you want to, you could do a middle ground and get, do the other things you were gonna do, check attendance.
You could put it out.
Check, talk to the staff, do this, before we decide on a survey.
You could even put it out and say, you could put it out and say it's not gonna affect the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. What are your thoughts for the future?
Yeah.
Even if you went one way, you could always eliminate it in the future. You could, if you, because other schools have done that. I think Wall did that. You, if you, if you got enough people that said they wanted to do it and you tried it for one year, it doesn't mean it has to be every year forever. If you notice that it's.
Every other year we do first grade.
Again, no.
We just survey the kids.
I bet the kids would say, like, I bet the kids would say no. Depends when you ask them. January, yes, I'd ask them February, right. May, no, I'll pick the summer early.
I think it was those kids who say no, they don't want to get out of school either.
Uh-uh.
Because I'm really asking that school.
Well, like you said, you're talking, you're only talking three days.
Okay, so where are we heading?
I like Sherri's idea of pulling together statistics, like what schools are doing it, are we the elementary and all that?
The other information that you were gonna look at.
What's the attendance been like? Like maybe we should start with September.
And maybe also let the staff do this, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. You don't have to survey it.
Yeah, I can ask, um, we can, I can do that. I can dig a little deeper, see what other, what, how many, how much information I can compile. And then, um, let you know.
And then get a first draft of what the calendar would even look like.
I could run a couple of, you know, of what would, what, what could it look like if we did it? What could it look like if we didn't? You know, a couple variations of both, probably two of each. Because outside of the February break, there's still gonna be some variations of, of things I would consider for a calendar. That would be like aligning a professional development day with the other sending districts outside of this.
Why don't they have a February break on the same week as the holiday? I don't understand.
It's never been.
That's interesting. I mean, why wouldn't they do it?
I would never support that with an extra coming back on the holiday.
You think it makes travel cheaper, right?
Probably.
People will never know it's a week.
Okay.
That's what I heard from you this morning.
It's possible.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll, I'll put together more data. I'll try and put together a file that has a few, uh, different pieces and different categories that helps, you know, give us a picture of what it looks like. I mean, we don't have to have this calendar, no.
We have a calendar.
We have a calendar right now.
Right? They were changed.
I'm sorry for bringing that up.
I'm glad you brought it up. It's been planned.
And then, uh, so were you suggesting also Michelle to look at the attendance numbers?
I, I just wonder what the days in, I mean, if they, maybe I think they're there.
Yeah, I will look that up.
If they're twenty-two.
Eighteen is really the number.
I'll look at my list.
That is the, the big state number.
But even, even after ten, you have to do things.
We're sending, yeah, you get letters at different times. You know, you get calls and letters throughout the different times. We do a periodical check on attendance and then see who crossed the threshold, you create a letter for them. Sarah will actually write in hand on people's letters to let them know that somebody actually meant this. And that it matters, you know, so.
Yeah, it matters, and then when they move on to the next school, it matters for them getting credit.
Oh, even more so. But, okay.
Okay, um, any other new business? Can I ask for comments from the public on any item?
You know, first, I'll make sure. I'm Brittany. I have Brittany Dantwano. I have a fourth grader, second grader, and preschooler here at the school. I wanted to thank you for honoring that, Sharon. He was also my dad's friend, did a lot for the community, so thanks for bringing that up. And I'm sorry for everyone who knew him, who was with him. So, yeah, I'm here because of the calendar that was just brought up, and particularly for February.
I think this is a plan.
I think, I think we need it off. I, I can gather twenty-five people right now from second, third, and fourth grade who would stand behind me on that.
And they'll all answer the survey, right?
Yes. Not only does Madison Square High School do it, Brielle, Spring Lake, Spring Lake Heights, and Seagirt, all the same week.
With the Monday coming back.
I'm not sure if everyone's with Monday. I, I don't know that part.
I'll get to that.
But I think there's just a lot of people in favor. I know it is a much cheaper time to travel for the people who can't go away on Christmas break because that's when everything's really, really high. And there was a lot of, at least our friends, a lot of kids out that whole week. I know it was only three days, like, because I think it was like Monday, Friday, and Monday. So my kids, like, weren't really impacted because the teachers kind of planned ahead, like, there was a lot of absentees anyway.
And to go in later in the summer, you're not, you're not bothered by that?
Three days, no.
Okay.
We have air conditioning.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm used to like getting out like June twenty-seventh in Brick, so like, I don't think this, like, June eighteen, seventeen would make much of a difference. Most camps don't start till June twenty-fourth.
Well, that's a good point, because there's that window of time in school like that.
Yeah, the smaller that one, no way.
That'd be a smaller window.
It's saying about existence, because you're like, what do you do with them for that period of time?
The Belmar camp, do they start at that time?
June twenty-fourth, yeah.
So there's still that window.
Yeah.
So sometimes it's a full two-week window of not finding any camps or childcare.
Thank you, Paul.
Interesting. I wonder if the younger, the people with younger kids want it, but the people with older kids don't want it.
If I had younger kids and I do want it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, I wonder if that's how it works.
And then also it would be tough, like my oldest to youngest, there's like a six-year gap. So when my oldest goes to Madison Square, it's gonna be different if we still follow this schedule.
That's what we have, yeah. Multiple kids, some in high school, some in elementary.
It's nice when the calendars match.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
Mark Lovis, nine oh four thirteen, I have a preschooler, a second grader, and a fourth grader here at Belmar. And I'm in favor of Brittany's proposal as well. Jimmy, I'm really glad you brought it up. Did you, did you know we were coming here tonight? No, because I think it does make sense to try to align with Madison Square. I mean, we're, I'd really like to see it done this year versus waiting till the following year because I know the, how these things go. They get dragged out and it takes a while, and that's why we're kind of pushing it now, because in four years, I am gonna have a kid in, in Madison Square High School. And I want to make sure that we do sort of have that alignment on the schedule, so it is easier to manage, you know, all right, which kids are gonna be home, which ones are going to school. From a work standpoint, I don't even have off on President's Day, so really makes no difference to me what, what we're getting. And I appreciate the fact that you guys want to reach out to the rest of the people in the school to try to get their opinion. Because, you know, I, I, I sit in that, that boat too sometimes, and you don't want to make a decision just based on one person's opinion. So I do encourage you to go out and talk to your constituents, talk to the people who elected you and, and get their opinions on where they feel about this. Because it, it is an important issue, and like Brittany said, there are, we've been talking to a lot of parents too, and there are a lot of people who are really interested in this issue. And that's why we're here tonight, sort of representing their voice. But, you know, if we have to, we can bring them in to sort of speak to you, but, you know, in your positions, I would encourage you all to speak to them. Speak to the parents, speak to the students, speak to the teachers, and see what they really look for. And, you know, really all we're looking for is just some alignment with, with Madison Square and not trying to be the outlier, outlier. So I do, I applaud you guys for your efforts, and I applaud you guys for, you know, wanting to make an educated decision and not sort of like thinking with your gut on this. So I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, and we'll take your word for the rest of the people, not me to bring it up.
What do you think is the best way to reach everyone? Because it seems like when we do the surveys, we don't really get a great response.
I think, uh, you know, you got a reporter from the CoStar here?
Get to.
Good. You know, I mean, if you guys mention, hey, this is, this is something we're looking for feedback on, you're gonna get feedback from people who are for it and people who are against it. And that's the challenge. You kind of have to weigh the good and the bad, right? Is who's this gonna benefit more? Who's it gonna be impacting the most? What are the, what are the pros, what are the cons? And that's really how you have to look at it.
But do you think when we email the surveys out, do you think that's really getting it?
I think you'll get, you'll get the people who are interested in it, but you'll get a lot of the dads who just delete it.
I think if you send it via text, people would, like, maybe sometimes I don't always check the emails. But a text, people would look at it and might even do it right then and there.
I think the text is enough. You're right. I always do texts, but email, I don't.
It, it is tricky though. I mean, like, in my position, I can't send out surveys to people every time we make a decision, right? We have to sort of try to talk to people and try to talk to people who know people, people who know even more people, and try to sort of get a feel for what the community wants to do based on that. And that's really where your job comes in, is talking to those people and, you know, doing a, doing a survey of your own and, and trying to talk to people that you know and see how they feel about this. So you can inform your position. Because, I mean, you'll have certain people that you represent from different age groups, from different, you know, the, there's different types of parents in the school, right? There's parents who have kids who are getting ready to leave and go somewhere else. There's parents who are just getting started. Maybe they have their first child here. So it is a different dynamic, you know, and I only represent a small group of those parents who have, you know, multiple children of different age groups. But it's important to get, you know, the voice of everyone, I think, involved and, and see how they feel about it. And maybe to some people, they really don't care, right?